I'd like to call this special Board of Education meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before beginning with the presentation tonight, I just wanted to take a moment to express our profound sadness over the tragic loss of one of our students, Michael Ramandi, as well as keeping his brother Matthew and his mother Christina in our hearts and prayers as they remain hospitalized in serious condition. As Harry LeFever stated in his communications last night and today, the factual information released by the school district comes directly from law enforcement, the town, and the family. And it's essential that we focus on the facts as we know them and remain vigilant on the sources of where we get our information. Somers Schools really operates as a family, and in times like these, it is essential that we come together to support one another. Everyone here is committed to providing the necessary resources to help all students, teachers, staff, and families navigate this difficult time. We encourage open communication and remind everyone that our counseling services are available for those who need support or wish to talk about or process their feelings. A list of resources available was sent out by Harry last night, but please reach out to school counselors or any trusted adult if you need to gain access to help. A GoFundMe page has been set up for the Ramandi family to assist with funeral medical expenses. And the town of Somers has set up a community vigil for the Ramandi family, which will be held at Reese Park on Saturday evening, November 2nd, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Everyone in Somers Schools is here to listen and help each other heal. Let us honor the memory of Michael and extend our love and support to Matthew and Christina by fostering an environment of compassion and understanding so that we can navigate this together as a united community. With that, open it for public comment on agenda items only. We're only having one, the only thing on the agenda tonight is our lovely presentation from school leadership on our superintendent search focus groups and presentations. If anyone has any public comment? Okay, then I say, take it away, Susan and Ken.
We're gonna kind of roam the room, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
And you'll find out that Ken and I reverse roles as sidekick. It will be switching roles.
As long as the mic can pick you up, I think that's the only concern.
All right, so we'll just keep the mics close.
We'll stand close.
So we'll stay close to that, can you pick that up?
We want to make sure the audience can see and hear too.
All right.
The camera's there, hello camera. I'm Susan Wolin, and this is my colleague, Dr. Ken Mitchell. We were hired by the Somers School Board of Education after interviewing a number of search firms to help them in the identification of the next superintendent schools for Somers. And we had met with them earlier in the fall for what's called a planning meeting whereby we were setting the stage and the schedule for how the search itself would unfold. At that time, the board made very clear to us that they very much valued getting community and school community input in what we call focus groups as we were trying to gather information very specific to the Somers School District that would enable us to do our work. Our work being coming into the district and through focus groups over two days, both virtual and hybrid, to supplement the online survey that was already posted and lasted through, we closed it on October 20th, a date chosen because it was my 40th wedding anniversary and I would know to close it that day. We were gonna gather input from anybody who was invited to participate, and these were confidential opportunities to share opinions as well as insights, as well as very specific, more granular on the survey itself. So we thank the Somers Board of Education for allowing us this latitude. A particular shout out to Nancy, who was instrumental in helping organize, and everybody welcomed us. You should be proud of your students and your staff. It was a seamless day for us and evening, everybody was terrific to work with. And there was plenty of dark chocolate, and I'm very appreciative of that. So that's the stage for why we were here, and those dates were the 16th or 17th. And we're working on a little bit of an expedited schedule based on how different advertising venues have their deadlines and how we want to unfold this in terms of what we think are premium times to really do our recruiting efforts. And our recruiting efforts, we'll address later on how we go about that. So we could now actually, in terms of these meetings, we had invitational virtual meetings, in-person meetings, open in-person meetings, and the online survey. And they were again held over two days. And these are some of the folks that were invited or actually were able to participate, a total of 81 across the board. And these also included community members, PTA leadership, parents, students, central office support staff. If you could go to the next slide, that would be great.
I'm the slide man.
And the middle school faculty, Somers education faculty, et cetera, et cetera. This, I believe you said, Amanda, will be put on your superintendent page, the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Which will be great, so folks can reference that. So we came into the district on the 17th. The first two we conducted were virtual to provide another option for people who physically couldn't come into the buildings to have those focus groups with us. And we base our focus groups around three standard questions that are very consistently asked, and we do them one at a time, though sometimes one answer might segue into another. And we often, every focus group, Ken and I sit alongside, and we are typically typing into our respective computers. And we always let people know, we are listening even though we're typing, some of you may have been in those meetings, because we're trying to capture really what you're saying. And I say that because it's very important for us to re-remind, certainly the board knows this, for folks who didn't participate, we come into the district with some knowledge of your district, but we have done zero work in terms of preparing position specifications. We come in here with a blank slate because we want to capture what we're learning from the community based on these three focus group questions, which in simple form are what makes Somers an appealing place for a top-notch person to want to work in? What are the challenges this new superintendent will have in the next three years, maybe to five years? And what are key talents or attributes or experiences you think this new superintendent should have? And we are looking for what we call repeating themes, what we classify as most people said that. And it was very clear, very quickly, that there were very common themes that emerged that's dominant both in the survey as well as the focus groups. So as you can see up on the PowerPoint, that number was a little bit adjusted. We had closed the survey at 439, and just to applaud Somers, that is a really good number for a school district of this size. That's great participation, so thank you to everybody who did complete the survey. It was helpful. We, subsequent to, I guess it was Friday, we heard from students who missed the opportunities but still wanted to participate, and absolutely, they submitted answers to the survey, so we added that 10 to the 439. So that's why you're gonna see a little bit of a disparity in some points. But that is still, we thought, a remarkably high number, which Ken will also support. And I don't know if anybody has any questions to the focus groups themselves, or your set?
We can hold questions to the end as well.
Or if anybody has any questions, we're happy to entertain them now. We hope people felt that they could speak freely. We felt we heard very consistent themes, and people were very honest. And again, we do not characterize anything we're gonna share later in this presentation by cohort, by focus group, or by individual name. But as you can see, and Ken, do you want to jump in and talk about the demographics of the survey?
Sure, I'll break this down. So this was actually a more robust number of participants than we typically get for a district, a like district and a district this size. So you should be really happy about the participation rate. Sometimes people will say, well, we have so many more people living in the district. But this is a sample size. So again, we were very happy with that. And you can see the numbers, I don't have to read them. Obviously, resident with students, they were the most engaged in this process, and the teachers and support staff. So we have multiple survey responses, but for the purpose of tonight, we're focusing on what we identified as the top 10. And if you look at the top three, three or four, you'll see that there's a certain set of experiences that folks identified in the survey. Budgeting, finance, and facility planning was at the top of that, but also, folks wanted an experienced leader. Almost half wanted experience as a superintendent, and 40%, 41% wanted experience as a classroom teacher. What we were happy to see, and I know this had come up in our conversations, is that there was a strong interest in having someone with instructional and curricular leadership. So essentially, you want someone who can do it all. They can do facilities, they can do finance, they can do, and you'll even see that special education leadership. And we find that is common in districts, that oftentimes, parents who have children enrolled in the special education program are very engaged in this process, and so their numbers are well represented here. What we found interesting is that, and you'll see in a few minutes, communication was one of the major themes. And yet, less than a quarter identified that as a priority in the survey. But it's still in the top 10, Susan?
No, no, I was gonna say, the skilled in budgeting, financing, and facility was clearly, as you can see from the percentage, the top, one of the top, which was unusual. I haven't seen that often in these survey responses. Which tells me, every school district is different. And what we heard in certainly the focus groups dovetails with somebody who has those kind of skills.
We also found it interesting that skilled in working effectively with Board of Education was in the top 10. And I think that, and again, this comes from someone who's a superintendent.
Former.
Former superintendent. Is that sometimes people underestimate the importance of that role, you're a governance team. And yet, it made the top 10. So now let's take a look at the qualitative data that we collected. The first question, what would attract someone to Somers? So what are the strengths of the community? These are listed in alphabetical order. They're not grouped in any kind of category, but there are themes. And I'm not going to read each one of these to you, I'll highlight a few. And we heard Amanda talk about the community coming together tonight, over the last few days.
Look at number four, the budget.
That is clearly represented. People are proud of this community. They love this community. And they value the quality of the school system. We saw that here. And towards the end of this list, because that's the theme for the first few up there, parents are supportive, community engaged, generational community, tight-knit, family-like, we heard family like a lot, community rallies together. The district boasts experienced and dedicated educators with high retention rate. People stick around this place. And they want to make a career here, so you don't have a lot of turnover, it's not a transitional place. The district encourages and supports new ideas and innovation. And that's going to be very important when we're attracting someone.
Absolutely. And just if anybody's tuning in right now, this is the information that was gathered from the focus groups. This is separate from the slide that was the percentages, which was from the survey.
This is not the survey, these were the focus groups. So at the top, you'll see that people have this sense in the community that you have solid infrastructure, and that the district is financially stable. And they were kudos to the administration for being very creative fiscally over the years. And they are concerned that leadership is replaced with someone who is adept as.
But creative in a good way.
Creative in a good way, absolutely, yes, thank you for that, for qualifying that. There's another theme that emerged, if you've looked at this, and that is, there's a lot of collaboration. And that is valued in the community. Collaboration among the leaders, collaboration between the leaders and the faculty, between the educators in the district and the community. And one of those, and this was highlighted, and this came up repetitively, was the relationship with the unions, that it was a respectful relationship. And then, we hear this everywhere, and that is, a shared goal of academic excellence and continuous improvement. That's real important, because people will say, so is there a plan for continuous improvement? This is the third slide with the strengths. This focuses on the students, and again, not thematically, but those items appeared on this particular slide. It's a focus on addressing all student needs. And that was emphasized throughout, special education students, the mental health of students, social emotional learning of students. And you know how important that is these days. And then, there's a strong sense of, a strong investment in safety and security. People want to ensure that the schools are structured and equipped and prepared to keep their children safe. And this is the last set of challenges, now we're moving into challenges, challenges for this superintendent. So people will ask us, so what do I need to be able to do when I enter Somers? And they'll do their own homework, but they'll have this information too. We heard that the community had been going through some changes, and there were, we heard, at different times from different groups, that the population was increasing, or that there's the potential for the population to increase, or that the population was declining. So that, those are the perceptions that are out there. They weren't that consistent. But there was a sense that the community dynamics are changing, the community is becoming more diverse, and as a result of that, a leader needs to be prepared to deal with the challenges of diversity.
That it's not gonna be static going forward.
Yeah. And then, there was another theme that was addressed, and I think this has to do with some recent challenges in the last few years, and that is morale issues among the faculty. And there was a sense that a leader needed to come in to provide support, to understand what those issues might be, and to help to present strategies to reduce potential burnout and ensure that people are satisfied with their work in a professional environment and will want to continue to stay here. And then the last, and this came up throughout many of our meetings, that there were ideological factions in the district. There was a partisan divide over certain issues, and this was creating community divisions in spite of the sense of community. And that as a result of that, a new leader needed to be aware of it, and a new leader needed to come in with a skill set to challenge that. And you'll see that in our specs, we addressed that, because there's some themes, there are some terms that emerge consistently. More challenges for the superintendent. The relationship between the school board and the superintendent is very, very important, as you know. You're a governance team, you need to work together. You're symbolic of the district, you're temporary custodians in the district, and you are going, potential candidates are going to be asking us questions about the relationship, Harry's relationship and previous superintendent's relationship. It's so important. The other one that came up is combating disinformation, ensuring that, this is a communication theme, that the superintendent needs to be a strong communicator. And you'll see the term, will come up in a few minutes, centered. And that was a commonality from many, many groups. And part of the work would be to involve parents in this work, in the educational process and decision-making, but creating a culture where people feel protected, that it's safe to speak out. And there was some sense that, there was some trepidation on the part of the members in the professional community who weren't always comfortable speaking out. And then the last one on this list was demonstrating the value and impact of investments in education. And that is ultimately the responsibility of your governance team to supervise the superintendent to ensure that the integrity of the finances and the district strategic planning are intact.
Can I, just a broad challenge observation, lots of districts have similar challenges. Everything has changed, really starting with COVID, in terms of just how information flow comes, and just in terms of the landscape nationally. So this is, these are definitely themes that we heard from most people, but these themes in isolation are not atypical.
Right, good point.
And I think that is an important part, point, because you don't want to say, oh my gosh. But the reality is, there was no surprise, learningness. The interesting component is the fact that there was overwhelming community support for the schools and gathering together, but yet there are these ideological divides that have created some tension.
Yeah.
So it's sort of a, it's an inherent conflict. And that's why we personally like the word centered, because we feel it, I always use that barbell, and the center is where everybody seemed to mostly fall.
So the, I believe this is the last set of challenges. Again, focus on instruction, enhancing the STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math, and integrating AI. This came up. And it's essential. It's a challenge, it's also an opportunity as well, to prepare students, because that will be the world in which they are entering, or they are in. And then, communication is a theme, and ensuring stability within the administration team, because we have so many new administrators in this district, there was concern that a new superintendent would come in with the experience and the skills to work with those folks. And then the last, professional development opportunities, that was a priority. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more set of challenges. Got a lot of challenges. But you'll see how we consolidated these. So again, this is very common with districts. Get our test scores higher, so that our college acceptance rate is great, and improve our overall academic performance. But there was also, this is specific to Somers, and maybe not be unusual with other districts, but apparently there are some differing opinions about the IB program and the AP program. So there was an interest in having someone who's familiar with those programs, and about the differing opinions of those programs, who would be able to identify how best to sustain, implement, modify, whatever, to best serve all the students. And then, managing budget challenges, tax issues, common, always. And that's not something that's specific. We can take this back to 1970, and it'll be the same. Restoring trust between the community. And again, that goes to Susan's point, there's tension in many communities right now. It's not something that nobody in this room or in our audience is unaware of. And then, about the recent controversies.
Ken, I realize that it would be helpful for us just to say to the board, which they have already heard us talk about, and for the public that may be listening, that when we come in, and I'm actually gonna read from a document, that when we come into a district, that this process is not intended to represent an in-depth analysis of the school district, nor was it meant to seek solutions to any kind of ongoing situations. Rather, it was designed to gather general information regarding how the educational lay communities view the current condition of a school district, and attempt to identify some of the district challenges and expectations as they relate to the superintendent search process. I just want people to realize this was not scientific, and it's not providing complete direction on what to do. It's just, again, as we have described, an opportunity to gather information that will help guide us in the creation of the position specifications.
So it might be important then to talk about the process. So we use a qualitative process. We use a manual coding process. We review hundreds and hundreds of comments.
How many did you?
Almost 1,000, and over the three categories. We read them manually, we color code them, and then we put them into a software, not a generated AI software yet. But then we have, we review them in a software program that identifies theme. We compare those themes to the manually-generated themes. And then we run it through an open AI map, the numbers to see if we get any patterns in there that replicate those. So from there then, we go back to our manual themes that we identify, and then we revise those with each other, with our team, and from those, we get the specifications. So there are multiple layers to this.
Right.
And it's a tedious process, it's time-consuming, but it, we were.
And then.
Time-intensive.
Time-intensive. Ken will draft something, I will draft something, and then we figure it out together.
And we also involve other members of the school leadership.
But mostly, we do it.
Mostly, we do it. But we have them look at things and say, so what do you think about this phrasing? Or what did you see?
Now, and, yeah.
So why don't we move on to, so these are the specifications that have been derived from the data that we generated.
And it's important, and I've said this earlier in another meeting I was at, when we come here, as I mentioned, we have not written a word. Maybe Ken has been thinking, maybe I've been thinking, but no writing. And literally, we were here Thursday night, we left, what, 8:30 that night, after, whatever it was. And the next morning, you know, I've been doing this for more decades than I want to count, certain themes start emerging. And that's when we start the actual creating of the language for this. Some of these words you might not have seen in the information we've shared through the survey or from the focus groups, but they are words that we think best represent what we heard from most groups. And we're also trying to wordsmith to create inviting position specifications that will inspire talented people to apply.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, so it's important to use language that is gonna be, some of it may be used elsewhere, but this is truly specific to Somers. I wouldn't take this and use this in a different district. And we did not have any of this until after, well, I started Friday, yes, but then we closed the survey on Sunday, in all fairness. But again, the language is derived solely through the information we gathered through focus groups and the survey. And the survey, we are constantly reading. And, you know, there were 439 participants, and I think there were 238 comments. Some of them were very lengthy, some were a quick thank you, but we went through them as they were, we were checking.
So the first spec, a diplomatic, centered, we heard centered again and again and again from different groups. Or synonyms that were.
Similar.
Very similar. Who excels at strengthening and unifying relationships and rebuilding trust across the district and community through ongoing, clear, proactive, and transparent communication and engagement that encourages and invites participation. So each one of these will begin with some characteristics about leadership, but communication is a significant theme.
And we do use repetition, the word leader, throughout.
So the next one, a savvy visionary leader with past success. Now, you saw that in the survey. At establishing collaborative planning to develop and implement financial strategies, which is at the top of that survey, necessary to ensure that a complex system, people understand the complexity of the school system, will serve its stakeholders short and long term. Someone who's a strategic thinker.
This came through a lot. And again, how we ordered these was not.
No, there isn't a sequence.
There's no sequence.
One doesn't take precedence over the others, you're saying?
No, I mean, the board may say, we like these, we want to change some, we want a different order. There's no rhyme nor reason. Somebody who's motivated is gonna read each one, and they're gonna know each one is important because we chose to have only five. If you look at most position specifications, they're pages and pages. This is it. And this then, in whatever form you adopt, becomes the Somers position specification. And that's our charge, to go out and try to identify candidates we feel best match your position specifications.
You'll see, if you compare this to other specs in an ad, those are oftentimes very universal.
Right.
It's a stock template. These are very, very unique and customized to Somers. So this third one, a thoughtful, measured thinker who can lead innovative and future-oriented approaches. And that goes to the AI and to the STEM work that was sought by many participants. To prepare students for school success and their post-secondary experiences while ensuring equitable, inclusive access for all student groups. You have a population of all different kinds of students here, you want to welcome all and take care of all of them. And an approachable educational leader. And an approachable educational leader who models kindness and accessibility and is motivated to advocate for the well-being of students, again, student-focused, and the professional community, keeping those relationships going, because these are the primary caretakers, the professional community, of your students, to foster a supportive learning environment. And that's what you want.
And can I just add, we wanted to make sure we had students in the specs a lot, or frequently, because we heard many people mentioning students throughout the entire two days. That is not always the case. We can go into some school districts and have a full day and evening, and nobody ever talks about the kids. And so kudos to Somers and all the participants in the survey and the focus groups. It was a repeating theme throughout.
And a courageous, trustworthy leader who is mindful of the broad needs of the community, and through good governance, collaboration, and partnership with school leadership teams, will lead the district thoughtfully and wisely into the future. Two of these specs are very future-oriented.
Right.
And that's what schools should be about. They're not about the present moment, they're about preparing kids for the unknown.
And as we learned, people are hopeful, because you've had a remarkable history with long tenure of superintendents, that that characteristic will be carried through. And somebody who will come here and not look at this as a one-off for three years to a launching pad to something else, but will look at this and want to be part of the future.
And that's, those are the specs, and these are the recommended venues for advertising this.
These are pretty traditional venues, and the Education Week is, we're not going to get it in for November because of their deadline, we're aiming for the middle of December to get that issue. That, we feel, is a very important publication. Harry, you probably know, that's a national publication, people read that. We absolutely don't recommend advertising the New York Times, we don't think you get your money's worth out of that. A lot of these are websites that have minimal cost, you know, $300, it'll run for a month. Some, actually, the Connecticut Association of Public School Administrators and the New Jersey, it runs until the deadline of the applications. And then you have the other groups that we mentioned that we encourage as part of the resolution that we'll discuss, that the NISCIS also has a capability, you can pay X amount, and it just goes through email, or X amount to those people who have expressed interest in looking for jobs.
And the AAA...
That's more, and the AAA...
The American Association of School Administrators, 13,000 members.
It's important.
And they push out emails on a regular basis, and documents to those people who are signed up, so you'll have a national audience.
And we do, yeah, which the recruitment letter would also augment, which, again, just heightens awareness of the search across the nation, and it goes to educational institutions that train teachers, universities, school districts, professional associations, and just a very large network of people that we have gathered over the years.
Quick question, how do you choose these venues?
Vendors, they're pretty...
Are these just ones that typically everybody uses?
Yes.
Or do you handpick these, or how does that work?
They're the standard ones that you would, you can ask Harry, he will tell you. This is where I would go look. And the website, Connecticut and New Jersey, we like to expand the tri-state area, that particularly, it's a free capability, and we can, as soon as you approve, we can boom, get it to them, and it's immediate. There's no deadline, we can just, it's seamless, and we can work with that quickly. Because of your commitment in terms of recruiting, the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, we find of associations are the most worthwhile to advertise with.
Do you use these several with all the schools that you've searched for?
Absolutely, 100%. The Connecticut and the New Jersey are newer ones that we've started using in the past couple of years, but the other ones, for sure. We have taken some off because we don't find them as helpful, we find it's duplicative to the ones here that we feel are more rich in terms of returns. And again, as I mentioned, we, some folks, board members in different places, feel it's really important to advertise in the Times, and sometimes they run a special times of the year. I just don't, my personal feeling is I don't think so.
I think it might be worth explaining to, I know we've had this discussion when we've talked in the past as a board with you, but it might be worth explaining how many thousands of dollars it costs to advertise in the Times, and there's not really a return on it.
I don't even know, because we don't even recommend it. It's a crazy amount of money. The most expensive publication cost is approximately $2,800 for Education Week. That's a national print publication that goes to thousands of people nationwide, and then that also is going to be supplemented by a push-out to their membership electronically that will last for a month.
There was a time when the New York Times, every Sunday...
Yes, I remember, I listened to that.
...had dozens of positions, principals, pages, pages of it. It just isn't used anymore.
Right, and...
It's expensive.
Is that just because of the access, the internet and the websites?
I think that might be part of it, but just trending away from it, yeah.
Sort of like the penny saver.
It was on the opinion section, right. And I wanted to mention today, too, because I know when we spoke with you, and kudos to you for getting ahead on your search, there are a lot of superintendent searches going on right now. You have Eastchester, you have Tuckahoe, you have Greenberg, you have Rye, there's another one in Westchester that's going to be announced next week.
And another one after that.
There's a lot going on, so that's why, you know, good on you for moving quickly. At the same time, we're convinced that every district has its own set of challenges and opportunities, and somebody who might be right for this place, maybe okay here, too, but they're better there. And we're not looking for one-size-fits-all candidates, but people who really are going to be invested in Somers.
Once we have these specs, we'll begin immediately.
Tomorrow.
And I'm assuming you guys are going to be a bit proactive, reaching out to your own personal networks as well on top of this?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So, you know, certain people that may, before this even comes out, hey, we got an opening, we'll, you know...
No, I mean, the reality is, is that there, you know, tried and true methods of advertising, and for those who are in the private sector, which is where the decades of my search experience comes from, it's very different than in public education. Public education is a different sphere, it works more slowly, and you have to follow certain guidelines and regulations and certification. But for the purposes of our search here, we have, if you approve all this, we have websites, we have a published publication, we'll have a recruitment letter, and then we're going to also have, and supplemented by that, then we'll have the online editions of Education Week. And then we have our own personal outreach letters, which we've already drafted, we're just waiting for you to approve the specs, and we're ready to go, that we then send to people we might know of but aren't in our specific personal network, but we like what we've heard of them, and then we have our own personal network.
People have already reached out to some of us.
And again, to remind folks and people who don't know this, Ken, in his current capacity, is in the Educational Leadership Program as a professor, it's a doctoral program at Manhattanville, and he's also executive director of the Council of School Administrators for Southern Westchester, which is helpful, and one of our other colleagues is the just now retired executive director of Tri-State, which you're a part of. We have really what I call authentic assessments, meaning we're, we would, I would rather know 10 really talented people, who in turn might know 10 really talented people, than 50 okay people, who then will know 50 okay people, and we'll go from there. And as we had shared with you when we met in executive session, when you were interviewing us, we will always be honest. We're not going to present a candidate and not disclose what we know about that person. But we wouldn't propose a candidate that we didn't feel met your position specifications and based on our reference checks and a social media check, you know, a quick one, we're presenting to you. And we will always tell you about candidates that we feel, hmm, they meet a lot of what you're looking for, but hmm, we heard this from somebody we're not quite sure, let's talk about this person, so that you have that choice to decide, versus us making that decision, you know what, no. And it's going to become a partnership that way. But once you, in whatever form, adopt the resolution, then we're away. So we're going to start our work, and with the goal of starting our direct recruiting right away, and then get the postings up on the immediate websites, and then get the, you have to work with an advertising company to get that prepared for Education Week, which is very important for you to publicize yourselves in. And I did want to remind the community, I don't know if they watch your board meetings, you took advantage of something that school leadership, Chuck Fowler, has organized, that you could get...
Oh, the BOSI's...
You can receive the state BOSI's aid through the Monroe, Somers, BOSI's aid is applied towards $15,000 for the focus group, so you are getting back $9,000. So you are already spending less than most school boards would be paying who have chosen not to take advantage of that. So kudos to you and to your finance person who moved forward on that co-sir agreement.
I have a question, thank you.
And that's something that school leadership did do on our own, just to help, again, Chuck Fowler did, to help public school districts.
Margaret has a question.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the superintendent pipeline. Where do we find good candidates? And can we rely on any educational institutions, like universities, where people have graduated from, and alumni networks?
Everywhere. And the recruitment letter actually is specific to those kind of organizations. More locally, we have people on our team, the broad school leadership, and certainly my partner here, who are working with those future leaders, some of whom he's mentoring as they're working towards their doctorate. That's definitely a venue that's always explored. And again, word of mouth, superintendents know about this, assistant superintendents know about this, they're already studying the board. And as we talked, they're going to do as much research about this district, your history, moving forward, and how the board conducts itself, and their instability, and thematically how it's presented to the community.
I've been approached by a couple of superintendents who have told me, I have somebody who's interested, and I said, I really can't talk to you about it right now, we have to identify the specifications, I'm not sure whether they match the specifications, we'll get back to you sometime in early November.
Which actually is a reminder to our point, that we don't do anything, we don't know, because we didn't know our position specifications that we're proposing until the end of the 17th. But people will say, have said to me, so what are you looking for before?
You want to look at what Somers wanted, not just that school district.
We can't tell you that yet, because we're not doing the looking yet, because it's dependent upon what the Somers board ultimately chooses, based on our work doing the focus groups.
So I apologize, I know we've met with you now several times as a board, and we know your backgrounds, but I guess it might be worth it for those who haven't been introduced to both of you, to kind of get a sense of your background, that might be helpful for everyone.
Ken, you're alphabetically ahead of me.
Sure, I'm also older than you are, too.
I don't know, but how old are you, Ken?
Well, I started teaching in 1976.
So you were 22?
Two years after you.
Two years after me.
I won't mention when I was born, then.
You win, but not by much.
So I was a classroom teacher for 13 years, a principal for 15 years, assistant superintendent, and I was principal in Chappaqua, assistant superintendent in Bedford. That's how I wound up meeting Susan, who was the board president at that time, and I was a superintendent in South Orange Town, which is in Rockland County, and I have been teaching at Manhattanville College in the doctoral program for the last 10 years. And I work for the American, I do volunteer work with the American Association of School Administrators, I'm the editor for their Journal of Scholarship and Practice, and I'm the executive director of the Southern Westchester Superintendents, and I do other consultant work with school boards on governance and strategic planning, and sometimes with my colleague Susan.
And I'm Susan Ilion Wallen. I, like many of the people we met, am a townie. I grew up in Bedford from third grade on, and our two kids, 37 and 34, went through the system K through 12. That being said, by profession, I do executive search. That's what I've done since I graduated from college after you started teaching. Not by much, but it was after that, so congratulations, you win that. And I have run executive search firms in the city, I have run an in-house search firm for a major global organization, and I've worked for myself. My public service is in public education. I was a 12-year board member in Bedford Central, eight of those as board president, so maybe nine years as an officer, gone through a lot of what you've gone through here, and it's a wide range of different interests, so sympathetic to any district that has a lot of different points of view that you have to be centered about. I also was simultaneously, and this is how I knew Ife, president of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, which is a group of, what, 54 school districts, including special act districts, and had been on the board there before. I just retired, I do believe in term limits, from Northern Westchester Hospital as a board member, but I'm still part of the Northwell Health, which owns Northern Westchester, their Board of Advisors Steering Committee, an officer of the Foundation Board of Westchester Community College. And all I'm going to say about my future there is I should have said no, learned to say no. And Ken and I did meet in Bedford, and some interesting times, challenging times, and we still stayed in contact, and he, Ken and I have, for any number of your neighboring school districts, even in Putnam Valley twice, we've done board governance training, where we strongly believe good governance, good entry plans create good governance, and how do you, to work that together, and we've written a couple of pieces together. So that's my short and dirty, and I'm in my high school sports hall of fame, I am proud of that. That's it. So we have worked together on any number of searches, as well as other projects.
Patrick? Just two things, I think we had spoken about them in the previous meeting, just so the public knows. Once these ads go out, how long will they be staying out there, and can that be adjusted?
Well, the Connecticut Association and the Jersey Association are both free, and they'll be indefinite until we post the deadline. So if we tell them the deadline for applications is X date, that's when they take it off their site. The other ones are 30 days, which is fine. And obviously, the letter will go out, and the Education Week will go in the mail, as well as electronically.
What is it typically, how long you typically leave the ad out there?
For what?
How long typically do you leave the ad out?
In terms of posting?
30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
It'll be up on the websites of these professional associations for 30 days.
30 days is usually the max, or?
You could pay to have it for another 30 days, but I think 30 days will be fine.
And the second question, we had spoken about candidates that you, you know, would bring to us and wouldn't bring to us.
That's down the road, I probably shouldn't have mentioned it.
Right, but so, so you're going to be looking at the specifications, so if somebody's like way out of the ballpark, saying he doesn't meet 50%, that's somebody you would not bring.
I mean, what, how it works, and again, for those folks who aren't in public education, Ken is familiar with this, Harry and other administrators here, there's something called AppleTrack, it maybe has changed its name. And that's just a standard program that recruiting firms or BOSI's, whatever, uses, where people will go in who are interested and click on the particular job they're interested, and they would get to that through school leadership website, and all of our information will direct people to our website, School Leadership, and they fill out an application. Ken and I are each checking that every day. And if somebody comes up that we think, we need to talk to this person, we're starting that work on that person right away. So for us, it's an ongoing process, versus waiting until the application deadline where we're going to meet 100 people, or whatever. What we have learned, Patrick, over the years, is that fewer people want to be superintendents, fewer people want to be in public education, and there's a much smaller pool of people. So where 10 years ago, you might get 70 applications, and again, volume does not predict quality, now, maybe you might get 25 or 30, maybe a little more, maybe not that as many. And then you have to make sure, we will weed out people that we think, what we describe as, they, boy, they have a really good self-esteem, because some people will apply when it's just clearly they don't meet your specifications.
I just want to make sure that, like, you know, we're not passing somebody up if they don't have one or two qualifications out of like the 50 that we're looking for.
No, you're not going to find a perfect match.
Right.
I mean, you have, you're asking for somebody to pretty much walk on water, and you're not going to find that. But one of the things that we will do is, we'll develop an interview guide.
Right, which we talked about.
And we'll have a set of questions, and we'll have scenarios and tasks that will relate to the specification.
That's when we interview them.
That's when we're interviewing, to see what kind of matches we have.
But to your point, Patrick, we will meet with anybody that we think looks interesting, unless they're sending in an application, they're an accountant, or something that's so clearly, we know their reputation, not appropriate, or work in a district that we know is not similar to Somers. But we are eager to cast the net as wide as possible to have those screening interviews.
Susan, can I ask a question related to, these are great characteristics to define, you know, what type of person we hope to get, but more though, still, it's difficult in the process of, you know, interview and talk and so on, it's generally on the verbal level, very difficult to get into a much more in-depth, deeper qualification in terms of educator, okay? And I find that, you know, every, in resume, you list a sort of job... And I find that, you know, every, in his resume, you list a sort of job descriptions, but it's still not in-depth about his, you know, his ideas, aspirations. Sometimes people really choose the education field for, you know, that noble cause. What can we use some encouraging words to get people submit things? For example, you know, your PhD thesis, what is your goal when you entered the education, you know, college to earn PhD? Although we cannot probably say you must have a PhD. But I think almost nowadays, you know, all the superintendents have PhDs, right? So what is the thesis, what did you write about before? Whether you have later publications, whether you have written a book? These are things I think tend to give you much more in-depth qualification than, you know, sometimes we're limited by the interaction, the timing and interview process. So how can you do that to make sure the incoming resume includes things that, you know, really rich enough that it's easier for your job and our job in the sense to know the person more than just surface level?
The people who are applying to superintendencies often submit very comprehensive resumes. Sometimes more information than what you need.
What sort of typical resume you get?
Oh, well, pages, it might be a dozen pages and it might include articles and it might include all the committees that they've ever been on and all the organizations they belong to.
And Ken, and I can also say that part of the application process for us is they have to write a letter that addresses what the position specifications at Somers and why they're interested. You can learn a lot from that letter in terms of determining somebody's educational capacity and knowledge and visionary. Ken is an expert at that professionally, so we actually do have very interesting conversations. The point about the doctorate, fascinating, nobody mentioned having a doctorate in any of our focus groups.
But it's almost implied.
Not once, it never, ever came up. And again, we have found for ourselves, and as Ken referenced, the template, that's five specifications, we have five questions that are very specific to each question and we want specific examples. And then there's an, because past success shows future success. And I would love to talk to you about theory of education, but that doesn't mean you can enact a theory of education.
And we'll steer them right back on course. They'll come in with stocked responses, anticipating, tell us about yourself. And then they go off on telling us their philosophy and everything else that they want us to know about them. And we'll take them right back on task, explaining to them, this is the question. We gave you three minutes to answer this question. We have a pretty comprehensive interview guide for you. We need you to get focused. And we learn a lot when they do start to digress.
And we do, in our interviews, always have an ending question that allows us to learn something about them that's personal that we wouldn't know already. And that's very revealing, Ife.
And if they're not aware of that, they weren't watching tonight.
If they're watching it, God bless them.
They might be.
They could be. But actually, in terms of the process, we're out doing our work and certainly we'll be in touch with the board to say, things are proceeding, dah 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 dah. And then I know we have a date in January, the eighteenth is when we meet in executive session because we're dealing with personnel issues. And where we present our, who we think best match your board adopted position specifications. And we will have done background checks in terms of references. Some of these people we can check independently that they may not even be aware of because we know people who know them and we can be discreet, as well as doing a quick social media check. We discuss where you want to go and then you've already earmarked a weekend where, that's where you then start having your interviews in a discreet location where you have your questions. And we will work with you as much as you want to help devise those questions and how best to establish the do's and the don'ts. And we have actually given our rubric to past clients and they've sometimes used the exact questions or modified them a little bit. But what's good about that, then there's consistency. So what you look for in interviews is actually consistency, not out of the box. If somebody says something once, how meaningful is that really? But if they're saying the same answers to how they solve problems, maybe that's really a tried and true way. But then you have your opportunity to meet these people. Hopefully, from that group, you'll, yes, there are three people we want to invite back for further meetings. And when you identify those, that person who may be the finalist, that's when you need to do your references because we strongly want you as board members. We think it's good to team up, two board members do it together because then you can hear different things and then you come up with your reference check and then we go forward from there. But we're always available to help guide. But to your question, we do our best to get as much as we can. But as we all know, interviewing is not a scientific guarantee. There's no, you.
Another question, in the process to start the sort of recruiting process, when do we, as a board, have a chance to sort of discuss with you about the questions that you're gonna generate or create or posting to the candidates?
I think that's something that we have said, you need to trust us in the course of our work. We develop our own questions that we pass.
It's not a question of trust, it's basically, do we, you know, have the right to know?
Well, I guess we're gonna be able to, we're gonna interview finally ourselves, so we'll have our own questions.
We need to develop your questions when you interview them. We will share the questions.
Yeah, you certainly have shared with us, right?
You might want to use the same questions to see if you get a similar response. We'll have a variation on that.
So yeah, they're doing their screening and then we do the final.
Yeah, we have to know you are going out and sending certain questions.
Know the specs, so you'll know that we'll ask, because we will also be asking probing questions and clarifying questions. There's an organic nature to the interview process. We have some introductory questions that align with the specs and then the interview takes on its own life.
And as we mentioned, we often have, our clients use our framework for questions. You'll see the questions when we present the candidates.
I was gonna say, I'm sure on the eighteenth we'll discuss this at length with you when we discuss the candidates, so I'm not.
That's down the road.
Right. We have, we have a couple of months off as a board as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, Darrell?
Joe?
Thank you. I just, again, also for the benefit of the public, because we've discussed this a little bit and you, Susan, in your last answer, you just kind of hit on this a little bit. But could you just briefly give an overview for the benefit of the public that's watching about the projected timeline, the anticipated timelines? You've mentioned January eighteenth. I've had several members of the community stop me at the grocery store and say, how long is this gonna take? When do you think you're gonna have it? Are you gonna, you know, is this gonna take months and months and months? So could you just give us a brief overview of a timeline?
Yes, happy to.
Great minds, I was just gonna ask that same question, Darrell, so thank you.
Yeah, today obviously is the thirtieth and the goal is to adopt a resolution that provides us the opportunity to go out and start doing the recruiting and advertising in terms of the position specifications. We'll be doing recruiting, starting as soon as that happens, November to early January. The date of applications will close as January fifteenth. Ken and I will be screening candidates as soon as they start coming in. We're gonna be doing our work. We are in, too much regular contact? Right. It's ongoing, the goal is to present candidates. And even if the weather is bad and the schools are closed, we can still do that virtually on the eighteenth. No, the twenty-eighth of January in the evening to accommodate people who are working. And then you have earmarked the weekend of the thirty-first of January to start that same weekend. What we do is when we meet with candidates that we think meet the specifications, we say to them, we have absolutely no idea what the determination of the board will be, but please try to hold this weekend. And if they aren't invited back, they've held the weekend. If not, they're, they're fine, they understand.
It's a tough weekend for you. You'll be, it'll be grueling. You'll be spending a lot of time with these folks and with each other.
But it'll be a.
Bonding experience too.
Good, I would look at it as an opportunity. It's challenging, it's exciting. You're gonna, we'll work with you, we'll work with you to organize the best methodology, where to do it, how to do it, et cetera, et cetera. And when we say weekend, the last weekend in January, we were looking at vacation schedules and calendars and trying to find dates. That weekend might start one meeting on Friday, one on Saturday, two on Sunday, maybe one on Monday. But you've earmarked that period of time, we have to be flexible about that. You've always had the goal of having an appointment for a start date of July twenty-twenty-five, which is the first day of school. But we have, you know, an ideal goal that by March eleventh, there would be some announcement made. That's the goal. That doesn't mean it's not a fungible goal, but that's what you've directed us to. But the calendar is stamped draft, but you all have this.
Yes.
And again, you know, dealing with people is difficult. You know, if I want to move the bottle, I move the bottle. If I want a person to come in for an interview on the twenty-eighth, they may not be available that day. So we all have to be flexible on that. Things can change, somebody might get sick, the weather might be poor. So it's just important as a board to recognize you want to have, as Ken said, this is a great opportunity to bond, go with the flow, but you have a very important purpose as a board. Your number one responsibility is to hire and supervise a superintendent of schools. And you, you're headed that way.
We want to make this hard on you too. We want to make sure that we make this a very difficult choice.
But at the same time, he's the half glasses full, I'm the half glasses empty. You want to be realistic. And we will not come to you for the purposes to say, here are six people we think you should meet, when we know three or four of these people aren't good. Meaning you'll never, that's not, that's disrespectful to these poke people and they're just, it's disrespectful to you. So don't, it, it's, you don't want to get caught up in the volume of candidates. You want to get, identify the quality of candidates.
I think it might be worth mentioning too, I know we've, again, we've discussed this privately, but I think the public should know that you guys only work with us for now on this process and you're not taking other, as you mentioned, there's several other school districts, eight, nine, ten, what are we up to now? Other school districts looking for superintendents right now and you guys only will be working with us. You're not looking at other school districts, you're not looking at taking other candidate pools from other places. You are looking at what was derived from the data, driven from the surveys and the focus groups and that's what we're creating tonight with the specifications and that's what you're tasked with to go out and do.
Again, when I was on, sitting on your side of the table, had to work through two superintendent searches with two different search firms, I'm working with one of those search firms. You keep nodding your head here, you know Chuck Fowler. He is really the pinnacle in terms of expertise and knowledge and just the integrity with which I think school leadership operates. And that's why we will do our best, but we're not gonna pretend we're doing something we're not doing. And we're aware of a search right now where they've already, the search firm has already advertised for the position, but they haven't done any focus groups yet. That's why we're making the point of saying, these, not one piece of writing started until the seventeenth was concluded.
No, and I think that's what was important to us as a board, that that's what you guys presented to us is that you weren't gonna search for anybody or advertise for anything until we met with everybody in the community and made sure you knew what we wanted.
And again, it was a nice day for us. We got here, what time, seven-thirty Nancy, and we left at eight-fifteen, eight-thirty. Again, it's important for me and I think it's important for Ken to physically be in the school district because then you can honestly depict it to the people you're trying to recruit. I have to tell you, Joe, the kids were great. Or the teachers were so motivated and committed and worked beyond the norm. The administrators were very stable. I mean, those are important characteristics that people are gonna look for. And if they're gonna say, oh, I knew this happened, yes, they're aware of that and they'll talk to you about it. But we can, we feel more comfortable being your advocate to what we call the marketplace because we've spent a lot of time here. And as we started off our presentation, people here were generally nice to us.
It's good field.
Very nice and very clean buildings.
They were.
Very clean.
Your staff does a good job.
Amanda, did we discuss that we will, we'll get all the applicants' resumes?
I think that's something for going forward, we can discuss what we, yes.
Yes, right? So does the application process go through Nancy's office or directly to you people?
Goes to the school leadership site. We, you have no involvement in that, Ife.
So the application directly sends to you people?
Now, that doesn't mean, somebody might send something to the school district and Nancy would forward us, to us, and I would likely write to them and say, thank you for reaching out. Please go to AppleTrack and submit your application. Anybody who contacts you, send them to school leadership website and they can find all the information once the resolution.
Yeah, so if anybody emails us directly, we just pass them on.
Well, I think important is that the school district should have the entirety of the incoming application. I think that's probably a fair process.
That could be like a thousand, you know, if they're posting it there, that's gonna be like that.
Well, we have to, you know, this is also confidential search. So we have to make sure that everyone who's sending their information in.
Through Nancy's office that we have a record.
Ife, this is how it's gonna work. It's gonna, all applicants go to the school leadership website and they submit an application on our AppleTrack account. At the end of the search, when we meet, we're not end of the search, when the deadline is met and we meet with you on the twenty-eighth, every person who applied will let you know who that person is. But then we're gonna have the people that we will propose that we think that match best your specifications. This is very confidential information. People are trusting school leadership to maintain the confidentiality.
Oh yeah, I agree.
Nancy doesn't want to have anything to do with this at all.
But on the other hand, it would be very embarrassing when any of us walk on the street, somebody say, hey, I applied to your school. I say, oh, yeah? Who are you? I mean, that's just, you know, could happen.
I don't know if that's gonna happen, but.
We trust school leadership, thank you for your interest.
Then if they were applying to the wrong place, then that's, says a lot.
And again, if there are internal candidates for every client, we really feel, and it is the protocol, those internal candidates or candidate would go through the exact same process that any candidate would go through. And again, we, the reason school leadership, I believe, or one of the reasons, is successful is because of the confidentiality that candidates feel. Again, Harry is nodding, turn to Harry, he can give you answers. That we, we can't be successful recruiters on your behalf if people feel insecure about sharing personal information with us.
We wouldn't have hired you if we thought otherwise.
Yep, noted.
And as, but you raise a good point, Chad. It is, it's considered a confidential search. Every superintendent search is a confidential search in Westchester. It has to be. There is no way a talented person who has a contract is gonna allow themselves to be caught up in a public space with the possibility of leaving a job that they aren't even sure they want to have.
Or make it known and then they don't get it and then, yeah.
They just might want to have a conversation with us.
Sure. Thank you. And just so everyone knows. Oh, sorry. I was gonna say, if you want to go ahead, I was just gonna just emphasize to everybody that you disaggregated the data from the confidential, anonymous, I should say, surveys from everybody and the board had the privilege of reading through them. So we did have that all in mind too. But I just wanted to see if anyone had any comments on the specifications, if any changes wanted to be made or if we're good with that and we can kind of proceed to start talking about the resolution at this point, but.
I think, does Darrell have a question?
Chad, do you have a question?
No, no, no. It was, I, I just wanted to make sure we clarified what it is that we are looking to approve and move forward with, which right now we have it set up as the five characteristics.
Right.
Generated off of the interactions you had in the focus groups.
Yep.
And so those, in those focus groups, I, sorry, I tend to summarize the obvious sometimes. But you didn't go in, these were not canned responses that people had to select from. So this came kind of naturally and all of the writing that you were doing or whatever you were doing in there.
You were in some of our focus groups, right? What were we doing when you were talking, typing the whole time?
And I could also say, I mean, obviously, I trust that you were taking notes during those focus groups and I know that we got a lot of participation from that, which is great. But the responses that came in and reading through all the responses to the same questions that you offered in the focus groups in the survey, you could clearly see the themes that are in the specifications tonight. So I don't know if anyone has any additional.
I just wanted to say the same thing. I read the comments and they're reflected in here. And I think the specifications, it's exciting, the language that you've chosen. I, you know, I think people, when they read these kinds of vacancy announcements or specifications, they project themselves onto it, right? So you're gonna get candidates who say, well, that's me. I, that, oh, that's exciting, that, that. I, that, oh, that's exciting, that, that, this is just made perfect, this is just for me. And that's exactly what we want, right? We want people who, when they read this, see themselves in that specification and say, this is a place I want to be. And to the extent you've captured what our community wants in the specifications, and I think you've done a really good job in doing that. I think these specifications are going to do a really good job of identifying people who we want to bring here, who fit these criteria that reflects what our community as a whole wants.
Thank you. I, I will say, the word, the word choices were very carefully selected to reflect what we heard from your community, but in a way that would hopefully inspire people when they read the description.
And, and we talked about that when we met you, right? That we, we, there's a, there's a need for an inspired leader that we want to bring in here and I think you've done a really good job capturing that. And I, I want to meet these people. I want to meet the people that-
So do we.
That, that respond to this. I want to meet the people, the people who positively respond to these specifications. I want to meet these people.
And that's why we want access to these applications.
And actually, Ken references, if you, I forget which specifications talk about, we talk about future twice, but one specific to education. And a smart person will know what is built into that, which is the technology part, the AYOG part, et cetera.
I have a sense that, sorry, the, you know, in reading through the comments, reading through the specifications that you generated coming out of the focus groups, it kind of feels like the, all the strengths of Somers, Somers Central School District, our town, our community, that seems like a pretty tight-knit line that formed through there, probably from a lot of different people. I suspect the challenge is, there's some more deviation on where those came from and, and that's where the leader that we're looking for, needs to find that leadership that-
Right, yeah.
Takes all of that and moves us all in our common goal directions and, and listens to everyone on, on all those other, all those other points.
We've, we found that the, the groups were respectful, they were constructive, they were positive.
Happy to be participating.
Happy, really. They, we, I enjoyed the sessions with the people, got to know-
Except for my partner. No, I, I mean, but we were, we feel that we were true to what we heard the focus group participants share with us in terms of challenges, which are embedded in here, as well as future, as well as characteristics. And again, you might not see the word that you used when we were typing, but we use words that we thought reflect most people, but we feel would, as we said, inspire people to apply. So, it's a, it's a fine needle. But again, this is, this is Somers. Once you adopt it, we go out and look for people we feel will best match Somers Board of Education position specifications for superintendent.
This will be on our website throughout the process, right? Available for people to access.
That, this, the presentation? Absolutely.
Yeah. So, my only point is that perhaps our webmaster or administration could make this process easier. I still find it difficult to, to try to get this quickly. I would like to, you know, be able to-
Well, on Board Docs, it's a different issue and we'll deal with that offline.
Yeah.
But the-
Website.
On our website, it's, it's, there's a superintendent search tab right on the front page, like you can't-
But it's not on yet, right?
No, it is.
It is?
It has, it has been live for weeks.
I was looking for it.
It's literally-
I think it's been a couple of days after our planning meeting.
Superintendent search, right there on the front page.
No, no, this document.
It's not there yet.
No, well, because it just got presented tonight, so we have to put it up.
That would be available through our own website as well.
Correct.
Make sure.
We just got it from Susan and Ken yesterday and there's a lot going on the past couple of days. And also, it's been available in Board Docs since we got it.
Right, right. I know Board Docs is logged in, but I think our own website should be-
Well, the community doesn't have to log in to see the presentation for Board Docs. The presentation's been up since-
Also, you might, some, some school boards choose to take the public presentation and post it on their superintendent page.
That's, that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
I just, we hadn't gotten it.
I knew they were doing the actual PowerPoint, but some people put the video, too.
Oh, the video of this? Oh, our, all our videos are on the website, but I see what you're saying. Put the link to this specific meeting.
Right, so it's right there, so they don't have to search for it.
Fair point.
Whatever convenient, yeah.
I, I thought the, what you came up with, what you compiled there and what Daryl already mentioned, feels right. It feels like Somers, it feels, it gives that sense of the pride, is forward-looking, which is really what we want. But I also feel there's a lot of honesty in there, too. And that's, that's critical. And then that's part of the trust and the relationship that we all need and want going forward. So, I, I went through that. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sure that I have a whole lot that I would change on that. I think it felt right to me.
Thank you.
Thinking about it.
I just, there was one item, I know it, like I said, previous, like the must-have or like the top 10 was the previous superintendent experience. I don't want us to pass if there's somebody who's been like a second or an assistant super, like, you know, somebody whose previous, like, top leadership, a second-in-command person looking to make that step up.
Absolutely.
Also wanted, don't want to just leave those off just because they don't hit that bullet point, but if they're close enough.
Yeah, we're very open to that.
Agreed, I think we have to be wide on that angle.
And these advertisements, national reach, right? National reach and the upstate reach, so we do have that scope.
And what you're going to be putting out is going to be like those five characteristics. That's it.
That's it.
Correct, that's what we're going to-
We already have a recruitment letter that we, up there. All we need to do is, we already inserted it, but we don't know if you're going to approve it and as soon as that's ready and if you authorize it, we're ready to go. That's going to be out and-
Tomorrow.
So, it sounds like, and stop me if I'm wrong, but there's no changes anyone's looking to make from those five specifications based on, okay. So, that's step one. And then before we actually, before I read this resolution and we can vote on it, I also just wanted to make everyone aware of the Westchester transparency law, Westchester salary transparency law we have to abide by. I spoke with our council and, so, any job that takes whole or in part place in Westchester County in all of its advertisements has to give a salary range in good faith. And it's meant with good intentions to make sure that everybody has an understanding of what that salary range could possibly be so that you're not offering one salary to one person and another salary to another person. That's the premise behind the law. But in any event, we are, we can't just say competitively regional salary. So, in turn, what we've put in, and I discussed this with Susan, I discussed it with Chad, and I just want to have this discussion overall in the range. We tried to keep it wide, but I want to have a discussion with the board as a whole. Right now, it's at 250 to 325, subject to negotiation based on qualifications and experience. In addition, a regionally competitive fringe benefits package will be offered, which doesn't have to have a range. So, that's a very wide range. I'm not saying that that's, we're going to hire someone at 250 or we're going to hire someone at 325, but it's a good faith range. And it can't be, it could be under 250, it could be over 325 potentially, but it's a good faith range as a board that we are willing to look and we can, that's where negotiations open up when we have our finalists. So, does that make sense? Is that acceptable? Just looking at the salary ranges in the region, they're all over the map. Monmore Berry has messed up the curve for everybody. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. I don't want to scare anyone off. I don't want to, so, I guess if that makes sense to everybody, if you're good, okay.
Like you said, it's a range.
It's a range.
It's not going to be here or there.
Exactly, thank you.
It could be anywhere in between.
I, I just wanted to be clear and I wanted to have an open discussion.
We never used to have to do this until this regulation and it makes it a little tricky because you don't want people to see this and say, I'm not going to bother. But it gives us, we feel, enough flexibility that we can approach. And if somebody in Chicago reads it and says they're not interested because of this range or benefits, okay, that's just-
I mean, that's the nature of the beast, I guess, right? Okay, so then, and I'm going to read this, it's long. I think it's important that I read it all, I guess, since it is such an important moment. Whereas the Board of Education has engaged the services of School Leadership LLC of Melver, New York to assist in its search for a new superintendent of schools. And where School Leadership LLC has submitted a specification development report to the board following its conduct of focus groups and public meetings to solicit input and ideas from staff, students, parents, and the community at large. And input data have also been reviewed from the results of a questionnaire made widely available throughout the school district. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. The board authorized the School Leadership LLC to arrange for publication of position advertisements at district expense in education week, the websites of the American Association of School Administrators, the New York State Council of School Superintendents, the National Association of Black School Educators, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, and through a recruitment letter sent to 1,800 persons and organizations regionally and nationally. Said advertisements or postings should make reference to the following specifications for the candidates for said position. The successful candidate will be a diplomatic-centered leader who excels at strengthening and unifying relationships and rebuilding trust across the district and community through ongoing